I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Could we remain standing for our deceased members for the month of June? Nancy McClintock. Robert Kozak. Kenneth Black. Joseph Soha, Jr. Patricia Felice. And James, John, you got the mayor.
Deepa Fetis.
Deepa Fetis.
Can you read this to us?
Oh, yeah. A 30-year member of the Brookhaven Town Watch. And we have Angelene Vella Frisco. Thank you.
I never knew his last name. Never knew his last name.
All right, Mr. Ward, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Heller, absent. Ms. Folio.
Present.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mr. DePlicky.
Here.
Ms. Suicki.
Present.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mayor Leslie's absent. Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Willett's here. Mrs. Boyle is absent. Chief Montella.
Here.
Police Chief Tim Havick, he is absent. Roll call complete.
Thank you. And that opens up the first public discussion. I see a crowd here. Is this all for the same, what do you call it, item? The Glen? Do we have any spokes, you know, to narrow it down? We have spokespeople to speak on behalf of the group?
Yes.
Not that I won't stop anybody from stepping up. We only just have a three-minute limit.
I'm Paul Pedrick from Brookhaven Glen.
Paul, could you sign in, please?
Yes, sir. So I'd like to read this letter to the borough. We write on the behalf of the residents of Brookhaven Glen. We respectfully request that you address the following questions and comments in writing, that you respond to our recent right-to-know law requests, which I have attached, prior to the next Brookhaven Council meeting on August the 4th, 2025. Fundamentally, we want to know if our community is safe to live in and if the developer built the community in accordance with the plans you approved. Please answer these two questions with a simple yes or no. We are open to any explanation of your yes or no answers, but we ask for a definitive answer prior to any explanation. In determining your answers, please imagine that your parents, children, or grandchildren are living in our community. Would you feel they are safe? Would you feel that they got the benefit of what they paid? Do you feel that you have satisfied your obligations to ensure our safety and that we received what we paid for? We ask these questions because despite our efforts in explaining our concerns and your seeming recognition of our concern at private council meetings, several issues remain open and unaddressed. On March 6th, 2025, Brookhaven's code officer cited the developer for 14 separate violations that compromised the safety of our community. At a council meeting concerning these violations, council expressed its frustration and concern over these violations and vowed to fine the developer $1,000 a day until the violations were resolved. At that same meeting, Brookhaven's fire marshal expressed his concern about the safety of our community based upon these and other violations he found in his many inspections. Did the developer resolve all 14 violations? If not, why not? Is there a plan or schedule in place for these violations to be resolved? If so, what proof is there that these violations have been satisfactorily resolved? Did Brookhaven find the developer? If so, how much? Has the developer satisfied these fines? If not, why not? Is Brookhaven's fire marshal satisfied with the fire safety of our community? The council has also stated it would schedule a meeting with the developer and us to review all open matters so that this can be amicably and fairly resolved. Why has this meeting not been scheduled? What effort has the council made to schedule that meeting? The additional following issues with the completion of the community remain unsolved. I'm going to skip over the things that are on this list, but they're all things that we put in to be fixed with the previous management company to know available. I do note one thing, that the required railing by the ramp at the dog park has not been installed. I'll just note that because that was the last thing on this builder's punch list that he had to do. And it isn't, and it has been installed. The status of the certificates of occupancy remains unresolved. In response to a right-to-know law request we submitted for the certificates of occupancy, we received all conditional certificates of occupancy. Why are these certificates conditional? What are the open issues preventing the issuance of final certificates? What is the schedule and plan to address those issues? We love Brookhaven and our community. We need your help as our representatives to address our concerns. Other than the fire marshal, we feel ignored and disrespected. We remain open to resolving these issues amicably, promptly, and fairly. The council's honest and thorough response to our concerns and the additional right-to-know laws requests we have submitted are necessary for us to reach a resolution. Signed by me, Paul W. Pedrick, President of the Brookhaven Glen Condo Owners Association. I have a copy for each member of the council. They can look them over. I will apologize because I only have three copies of the right-to-know questions that were asked for, and I have submitted, there's, this is a...
If you have one packet, we'll take care of the copy. That's not...
I mean, there's only three. I just...
Okay, don't shorten yourself.
I actually didn't see that was in there. So if you don't mind me approaching, I will gladly hand these out to you.
Absolutely.
Okay. And before I do that, I'd like to leave you with this thought. What if the recent fire at Summit condo happened at Brookhaven Glen? What would a post-fire investigation turn up if that fire happened here?
There's a couple more. There's two there.
See, you're not sure of copies, right?
I'm sorry. There's only three copies of these. There's a copy for the board.
I can make, I'll make sure everybody gets...
But you have, you have your original. Okay.
All right, I'll make sure everybody gets one.
Mr. Pedrick? I wanted to make one little comment in regards to a potential meeting with some of us up here on council, with other representatives to meet your HOA group and, you know, face-to-face, have a little meeting to see what still needs to be looked into. We had a little minor meeting last month, vacations and stuff came into play, but I was fully planning to work with a few of us up here to, you know, try to sit down with you folks one more time.
What I remember Tyree saying was he would like to see all of us sitting at that table over there. This is what we're looking for. You guys hold all the money with the builder, with his insurance policy, to fix everything. Everything that these conditions that are, that are still here, that we still have, that are still in our residence, they don't feel safe. We don't feel safe at all. So these are questions, you guys got a month. If you can get together, I mean, this has been two and a half months, two and a half months? And that's what our goal is, to sit down with Mr. Gebert and hash these things over. We have an entirely different idea of what he expects of us than what he did with us. I also, our engineer that we hired has two pages of inconsistencies that he still hasn't finished. He hasn't even started. He needs to do that before he thinks he can hand everything over to us. If he says he handed over to us, that means we owe him at all, and we do not. Thank you.
Now, any individuals that want to get up? Any other individuals want to get up and speak?
I would just like to say one thing. I would like to say...
Excuse me, ma'am, could you write, sign in on that?
Oh, sure. My name's Dana Barshak. I'm Vice President of the COA. I just want to say one thing. My biggest fear is that this builder is going to get his insurance policy back and leave. We have elevators breaking. We have building siding that's not completed of the stone. We have roofs leaking, and this guy's not fixing, and he's trying to send all the bills to us, saying we're the new board. We just took over a year ago, July. So everything, I'm, I just don't think he should be released. Like, the water fountain, for example, doesn't work. To me, that's unacceptable. There's people that look at the water fountain, pay $10,000 more to work, to look at that fountain. It should work. I'm the type of person, if you build something, make it work. And I don't think this builder should get a dime until everything is legitimate. We just got fire extinguishers two weeks ago. That's a disgrace in my book. I come from Brumal. That does not happen here. Okay? It does not happen. So I just think that there's 55 and older, you guys need to get on the ball because God forbid there's a fire. The borough's in trouble because it's very unsafe, and Montanella's the only one that has helped us. The only one. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else. Got to be somebody else. Don't be afraid not to talk.
I just moved in in January, resident, and I swore that I got...
Ask a lawyer.
There was this real honest-to-God certificate of occupancy. It turns out that most people, and I don't even know for sure that mine is actually not conditional, how can that happen in town? It's seemingly unacceptable that things like that can slip through town. So, you know, if we can get that resolved, that's one of the bigger issues as far as I'm concerned. I might be able to say, are there people selling their, selling some condos? How can you do that without a real honest-to-God certificate of occupancy? So please make that one of the many priorities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Come on, there's got to be somebody else.
She doesn't say a word.
Yes, there was a meeting with the developer. There was a meeting with the developer, also included Mr. Catania, Mr. DePlicky, and... There were four of us.
Is the mic on?
Sorry, is that mic on?
No, it's not on.
There were four of us, okay, at this meeting.
Mr. Guthrie.
Oh, yes, Mr. Guthrie. Okay. Mr. Guthrie and Mr. Catania also said that they had gone back two weeks after in March to prove that all of fines things were taken care of. I've taken pictures in our building, in the 700 building. Mr. Catania, there is not a fixture or whatever on the fire door that leads to the second door outside. There is not a thing that pulls it closed. If you open the outside door, the inside door on a day pulls right through, so a fire could go right through. Okay? And we are being assessed, a special assessment, of $2,000 to make up the difference or whatever that this board has decided we now owe, in addition to raising our HOA dues from $290 to $350 a month. I expect at the end of the year, it's going to be more than that.
That's how it's going to be, but that, he's lying.
One person at a time, please, talking.
Sorry.
This is what happens when I speak the truth. So, just so you know, I have proof here on my phone of at least one violation that is still, okay? We did get fire extinguishers, okay? We have sprinklers, too. Whether they work is another story. Hopefully, we'll find out by the end of the week. Other than that, you know, deal with what you've been given. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris.
Good evening.
So I think I've been getting, Paul asked that you, he laid out some questions and asked that you respond to them in writing. I just wanted to find out, is that a yes? Will you respond to the questions that were laid out in the document in writing?
It's a, it's a request, a right-to-know request. Well, that has to be answered through our legal department. I just can't give you an answer yes right now.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
It's the request.
Carol Austin.
Austin.
Yes, so you can't give me an answer about whether...
She wants to answer the question.
You're going to answer the questions?
Yeah, the right-to-know request, yes.
You will answer the question?
Formally, yes.
Okay, great. And by when?
I don't know what the timeline is on the request. A right-to-know request is submitted to the borough. It gives us, Mr. Wills, 30 days to respond?
Gives us five business days to respond to a right-to-know law request, and then from there, the borough can request an additional 30 days.
Okay.
And with all the right-to-know law requests, we have fully complied with the law, and we expect to fully comply with the law in the future.
Wonderful. So we can expect to hear from you in five days? Or a request for a 30-day continuance?
We already, I received a letter for a 30-day extension, so we're in that period of time. Plus, the right-to-know, if it comes back, with 30 days. And then before the August 4th, the next meeting, which we laid out for again. Does that help with your questions?
I just want to make sure something's going to happen. I don't think coming to these meetings time and time again. So I'm looking for, thank you for acknowledging 30 days, so it's already in that cycle, so what can we expect?
Well, when the request comes in, it'll be answered.
Well, apparently, it's in already.
It was filed on the 23rd.
It was filed on the 23rd.
Right, and it's a 30-day response, right? Jay, within that 30 days.
Great, so what should we do if that doesn't happen within 30 days?
Between, I'm sorry, your question?
What should we do if we don't have a response by the end of the 30 days?
How do we handle it, Jay?
We have to.
By law, we have to have a response within 30 days.
We're sure to answer these questions.
I'm sorry, I can't hear the person that was talking in the back. I'm sorry, what was your question?
She said we've already done this and we haven't gotten a response. I can't speak to that.
No, the right-to-know request was just received, from what I understand, and that we've been given, what, an extension of 30 days? Was that after the 23rd, when Paul had stated that it was submitted? I don't have access to the right-to-know. I'm sorry, sorry, what?
When I put it in, I got a letter or an email back that, yes, it's quite lengthy, so I expected the 30 days.
So there should be a date on that. Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a date that stays up.
They didn't have a date on it?
The date that I turned it in was the 23rd.
And when did we respond back? Did you get a...
Within five days.
And from five days?
About four days or something like that. But the response was they require an additional 30.
Okay, so that would be July 28th or so.
Correct. By law, we have to.
To the end of the month, hopefully.
Great, so we look forward to hearing by July 28th, since you're going to keep your word regarding that.
It's the law, we have to.
That's good to know, that the law is followed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
My name's Mike Scher, and I'm a resident of Brookhaven also. And one of the things that bothers me is that we have an elevator situation. We've already spent, we've already spent $23,000 to repair an elevator, and the system they put in is, at best, antiquated, though, you know, for buildings of this size, it's hard to get cables and everything, so they have a piston-type system. We've known, we've been notified recently that there are two more elevators that will shortly need work. I know we're in building six and that, no one wants to go in the thing. I think I'm the only person in the building that's not afraid to get into that elevator. It bounces. I mean, it comes down, it slams down. I can't understand how this equipment was approved and how it hasn't been addressed by, by the, by the villager, whatever it is here. New Yorker, I guess you can tell by the way I speak, so I'm not that familiar with, you know, all the conditions here. I was a builder in New York for over 50 years, so I understand construction and I understand what an inferior product is. I don't know how it was, how this product was approved and why this builder isn't responsible. They don't respond to anything. While I was there, it bothered me as a professional in the business, you know, that I would go around and see things that just, you know, turn my stomach, literally, how they shovel the stuff off on people. Don't that pay, you know, it's, it's not the highest, you know, cost project, but it, you know, it is not acceptable. There were things that are so obvious, the concrete work is terrible, the flags are breaking up, things are picking up. There are, you know, exterior portions that are, that were never completed. And I used to talk to Jeff, that's, you know, I don't know, you know, he was the project manager all the time, and he used to give me the, you know, this, we'll take care of it, we'll talk to you, we'll this, we'll that. Most of these things are not done. And I'd like to know if there's some assistance you can give us, because we've gotten estimates of legal fees to, you know, to sue them, that it just, it pays to close the elevators down and walk up and down the stairs all day. It's pretty, it's pretty negligent in, on their part to actually try to push the stuff off on anybody. That's about it. We would really like to get some assistance from this board, legal or whatever, because as I say, it's not fair. We've already been assessed a few thousand dollars a family to address the upcoming elevator, you know, expenses, because the pistons are leaking out and they, they, you know, people are afraid it's going to crash into the, into the first floor. It's not going to happen, I understand that, but somebody could get hurt. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but since we're talking about safety, I have no idea how long Lowe's has been open, how many years. But when it first opened, it got an "okay, open" label, right? But myself and a father of a son that my son played baseball with, who's also a safety guy, walked in there, and as you walk in and you look to the right, there's electrical panels wide open, wide open. And we reported it to the manager. So what did they do? They sell electrical stuff, they got panels, no, they put stuff in front of it, like flowers and stuff, said no kid or anybody else can go back there. That's wrong, but we've been letting it go, because there has to be inspections. And if I still see it yesterday, it's been after years, years. You work there, you ever notice it?
So I'm in the back, so I really haven't noticed it, but...
But it's there.
But I will most definitely look at it first thing tomorrow.
You would think somebody would have fixed this by now, especially...
So when you say when you first walk in, is it over by the inside seasonal stuff?
Yes, right down in the corner, right, where you used to, where you sell...
The inside seasonal, the inside plants, right?
Yeah, but it's got a stuff there that's got, so you keep, so nobody can go in there and play with it, but that doesn't stop anyone. You put doors on that.
Is that an active paddle?
Yeah.
I'm going to...
I'm gonna have to, I will look at it first thing tomorrow, sir.
Thank you.
7:00 AM.
Second of all, and I'm gonna try to make it quick, because I know it's a dead horse, OLC. My daughter and my family, my daughter works from home. She's been doing stuff for veterans for years, years. She's traveled across this country. Her and my family have donated clothes and toys to OLC people that just got evicted. Got evicted, because their husbands were abusing the wives. My family saw this. We're not talking drug addicts. This isn't a halfway house. And I ha, I find it absolutely appalling that we could sit there from day one with lawyers and figure out this wholesale and not know that somewhere down the road, it was gonna bite us in the ass. Now, if you wanna go back and look at what I said maybe a year and a half ago, I did not trust you people to make this deal. You just threw innocent people out on the street. These are not drug addicts. These are people that are trying to live their life, getting help from whatever they can. And I hope you people can sleep at night, I really do, because I don't know how. I really don't know how. But in order to, to work out, for somebody to sit there and work out a deal worth $1.5 million and not know the law, that somewhere down the road, now, that tells me that everybody knew from Jump Street, you were evicting them people, and it's a damn shame.
It really is.
That's it, thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Reel, and I'm a resident of Brookhaven Glen. We moved there just about a year ago, my husband and I. And quite frankly, I'm sure you've heard the stories many times in these council meetings, but from our first day in our new home that we were very excited to purchase, there were many, many integrity issues with our, with our condo, as well as the common area in our building. Get so angry when I talk about it, you can hear my voice shaking, but this did bring up a very good point, that we've all recently been assessed $2,000 per unit to make up for the deficit for the repairs to the buildings, for the maintenance contracts that hadn't been paid for. We've also had RHOF, each way fees increase. And quite frankly, based on the budget that was passed to us, I don't think our increase is gonna be sustainable for the long, for the long term. As everyone has said, there are many unfinished projects or issues within the buildings themselves. And they don't respond to us, they've stopped. I was very lucky to be, I was the last, ours was the last building that was completed. I was lucky to be first in that building, and they were still trying to sell units, so they were responsive to us, because they needed to be to sell the rest of the units. But the people that have moved in after us have not gotten that same graciousness from that builder. So there are still properties within my building that they haven't come back to fix things that they promised under the long-year warranty. So there, just, it's an integrity issue with this builder from the start. Quite frankly, nobody has friends with the person that sold us these condos, but they had to know what was happening. So maybe they didn't know building one and building two, but by the time it got to my building, they definitely knew the issues with this builder and with the property itself. So I can't say enough that the people in this room need your support, because we, we can't make, can't do anything with this builder, they just simply don't respond. And the promises that were made were not fulfilled. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, I think I got the drifts of, I've heard about the Glen, Brookhaven Glen. I was not on the committee, with some of these problems that had developed and all. I can tell you that we haven't given any money back to them. The committee, because of the summer, and one person didn't show at, at the committee meeting that was supposed to happen last month. Notes were taken, but that's as far as it got. The right to know request, they're gonna be answered, we answered all of them. So there's no fear that we're just gonna blindly just throw them into the trash. Okay, so being secure in the knowledge that that'll go through. Ma'am?
I just wanna say one thing. My name's Catherine Walter, and I live in building six, that I have never seen even a temporary certificate of occupancy, and I, I don't know how many other people never got anything at all from the builder. As far as I know, there's no such thing as a certificate of occupancy. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Yes, Paul.
He said that he didn't get his money back.
I think we're still, I believe we're still holding money right now. Yes.
In the last meeting, look back, it was said that the $66,500 he got.
And you just have the policy that?
Under the impression that no money was handed, there was not, there's still money on the table that has been handed back.
So we have, did I, the paperwork I gave you, that contains some, there's 32
Well, here, come.
Just so with all the muscle electric back there, and if you don't have it, that's okay. There's 32 items that we involved with our engineering company. I thought the paperwork maybe just happened, so I didn't, that was his.
He can send it to me if you want.
This is where, no, I wasn't gonna present it to you. I just think I gave it to you by mistake, but I must have not included it in the package.
Okay, this will be our last speaker for the Brookhaven Glen.
Hi, my name is Menora Khan. I live on Zorer Street, and I'm a junior at Sun Valley High School. And I have a proposal for a little free library that I think should be put outside the borough. I've been in contact with Sean and I believe Sherry Heller from the borough, so I was just seeking any guidance.
Uh, Sherry just, this is Heller, just step down for a second.
Somebody had more streets.
Um, so I was thinking we could put it near the borough or potentially in another public area, but I wanted to know if there was any, like, codes or, like, anything I needed to get from you guys?
I personally am not familiar if there would be any codes, but you've already said you've spoken to Sean, Mr. Guthrie?
Sean Guthrie.
He did, yeah, she did.
Why don't you cover a little bit about what the project is?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't you start with that, okay?
So it's like a youth-led community initiative, and our mission is to promote literacy in the community. So I've seen it from one of my neighbors, and I thought it'd be a really good idea to have him around town. And basically, we'd be putting books, and it'd be like a take one, leave one thing, so you would, like, take a book and then leave it for kids.
So do you have any specific locations of where you want to put these? Because we do have some that are near some of the parks, we have some that are on ends of streets. Is there a specific location that you're thinking of installing these?
Uh, maybe outside the borough or maybe at a playground. I know Garcia Playground is a popular spot, so maybe we could put one there.
Okay, so Tom Dyke, the gentleman that's sitting right there with the blue one, he is our president of our rec board. So it would be great if you can partner with Tom and come up with those locations, and he can bring it back to the rec board. So whatever you need from us, we think this is a fabulous idea, we love it. It's definitely a wonderful program, and it definitely, you know, supports the engagement, especially if you're gonna do Garcia, Garcia is such a younger park, especially finding books that are pertaining to that younger generation. But we definitely support these projects that you have.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Did I hear correctly that there's other ones already in?
There are a few other ones.
I thought I seen them around.
Yes. Yes, yes. So if you would like, you have my contact information, I will send it to Tom, and we can meet, if there's a specific location that you want to put these up, we'll absolutely work with you, okay? What about the, the material? Do you know how you're going to build it? Is it like a project that's already built, or you have to actually build them?
So I was thinking about purchasing a kit for it and building it, but I would also need to fundraise.
Okay.
So would you have any ideas? Like, I do have a fundraiser page, but I would need some help advertising it.
So Tom loves fundraising. He's like the mastermind behind all of our Family Day and rec board stuff. So he, like I said, he is a great person to kind of meet up with him, and we can definitely support your program and help you with whatever else you need. And I'm more than willing to talk to Lowe's to get some of the materials donated for you as well.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, like, the fundraise, fundraising and promoting, that, that would be done by her, like, it would happen in-house? Like, we're already kinda working on that. She, I think her main goal was, main reason to come out here is to seek, like, I guess, permission and, like, location-wise, like, we do have some around, like, for, for example, on Zorer Street, like, off of Zorer Street.
Okay.
They're literally just put it outside of their, in the front yard, which is amazing. But this is something she wants to make it bigger and kind of put it more, more around town.
Okay.
And she will do the fundraise, she will, you know, look through, and like, even the books and the materials, I feel like, I think she wants to kind of reach out to Aston Library, Middletown Library, and kind of like, see if they would like to donate books, and kind of make it a little bit bigger and like, more, you know, branch out to like, media area and, you know.
I think it's perfect.
I think she just needed, like, where
Yeah, I was gonna ask that question, how are you gonna find books to stock as a little library?
Um, I was thinking like a book drive or maybe partnering with Aston Library, since I know some people from there.
Tom works very well with our Middletown Library folks. They do a lot of books on blankets at our Eaton Park. We don't have anything for June, but we have, I mean, for July, but we have it up again in August. So again, like I said, Tom would be one of the greatest people that you can meet up with to have those conversations. And like I said, we're definitely here to support you. As for the borough, for the property, it's depending on where you're going to put them, that we would give you everything that you would need for authorization to actually install them, you know? So if there is permits, we would probably add a council meeting, waive them, so that you don't have to worry about those things. But again, work with Tom on getting a location of where you wanna do them, and then we can go from there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks so much for reaching out.
All right, closes public discussion one, and we're gonna move on to Chief Montella.
Good evening, council and borough residents. Brookhaven Fire Company's June 25 fire report. We had a busy month. At the end of my report, I will touch base on the Hilltop Fire and the ALS chase car, where we're at with our paramedic coverage and where we're heading down the road. So for the month, we had two fire incidents, 32 non-fire, 33 mutual aid, six drills, a total of 73 fire calls for the month, 338 for the year. We had $150,000 in structure loss, $80,000 in contents, $230,000 for the month, and $3 million in property endangered in the borough. Property endangered in the borough for the year was $3,850,000. We had one civilian injury, which was the Hilltop Fire. Our stats for fire was 73 calls, average of 10 firefighters per call, we were, per call, we were in service for 375 hours, 2,253 for the year, five training sessions, average of 20 firefighters, 218 hours of training for the month, 1,485 for the year. Fire incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had two building fires, 7116 Hilltop Drive, that was the fire in the summit, I'll talk to that at the end. We had a building fire at the Cube Smart Storage Facility on Brookhaven Road related to the storm that came through. Five auto accidents in the borough with injuries, 352 in Grandview, 352 in Dutton Mill Road, 352 in Brookhaven Road, and 352 in Trimble Boulevard, that accident was with a trapment. And we had 352 in Cambridge Road as well, and one elevator rescue, 300 Hardenway. And one CO call, 4361 School Lane, and that was a storm-related call as well. The fire company responded to 26 storm-related calls during that storm event that came through that night. We responded to a building fire in Chester Township at about 1314 Powell Road. Assisted Middletown Township Fire Company's Rocky Run in Middletown on five building fires, one at Oriole Avenue, Van Leeuwen Avenue, Mount Road, Riddle Healthcare 3 Building, and a building fire at Wooded Lane and Portdale Road. Assisted Chi Chester Fire Department on a working fire on 4,000 Columbia Avenue. Assisted Parkside Fire Company on a building fire at 231 Roland Road. Assisted Aston Township on a building fire on Pennell Road, Taco Bell. And Assisted Garden City Fire Company in Nether Providence on seven building fires, mostly storm-related. 700 Reiner Road, Ledbury Lane, 505 Media Parkway, Fort Terra Place, 636 Wilchire Drive, one on Burning Tree Road, and Standish House, Court of Par, I mean condos on Putman Village. They had, we had a building fire there as well. Our fire training, we got state certified in large area search class, which we performed in Our Lady Charity School. We had a class on alternative fuels, a new power stair chair for our EMS. We had that type of training, and we had a helicopter landing class that was by Jeff Stat at Aston Township Fire Department. We attended North League Middle School award ceremony and presented three scholarships for the firefighter Chris Cagas Essay Awards. Our ambulance report for June 2025, we had 208 ambulance calls, 120 people transported to hospital, 99 calls in Brookhaven Borough, 109 mutual aid calls, 111 ALS dispatch, 97 BLS dispatch. The ambulance answered 1,742 calls so far this year. We'll touch base real quick, I guess, on the chase car, where we're at with that. We spent many months, Sherry and Terry, myself, my brother, exploring options for paramedic service. Council's been on board with us. Zoo meetings, in-town meetings, Nether Providence, Upland. We really wanted to go to a regional chase car, which is, it's a very costly thing to put a chase car on. And we're trying to do it with regionalizing by multiple towns being involved, keep the cost for the paramedic. If we do it by ourselves, the cost is gonna be asking, we just can't. We provide BLS service, closure, everybody knows the hospital went down, their EMS system went down, and then we're left to pick everything up and figure out where to move on. So we did a couple of different plans. Tried to get contract with Royal Hospital, they gave in $625,000. Years ago, we got a price for closure before COVID at $360,000 years, that was years ago, what, 2020?
Yes.
We ended up signing with the CEO for the hospital for no fee, which was good on our part, on Arrow's part, getting that back to them. But they went out of business, and then you're seeing these subcontractors come in to provide service for communities. We received a bid And we received a bid to be Brookhaven, Parkside, Upland, Chester Township. And a bid five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, roughly five hundred and eighty thousand, correct, Sheriff?
That's correct, sir.
So it was based on population. The borough's fee to buy in on that was going to be two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, based on residents. Um, we thought that was a little bit high, just to put the car in service, but doing the math, just for that paramedic to be in the car, chase car. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, right off the bat, just his salary, no benefits, no car, no equipment is over two hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars. That's just his salary. That's not his benefits, it's anything. So there's a big cost factor on that. So we went down the whole road. We didn't have a really good meeting in Upland. We were almost forced to sign. We weren't ready to make that decision. We were doing our homework, getting all, you know, checking everything out, making sure we could get the best bang for our buck. And have a little bit of control with who's coming here and provide the service to our residents along with our ambulance. So we had a meeting years, uh, months before this, the fire company started looking into some things with um, Middletown Township. So we worked on some things with them. Um, we tried to get a formula up and how we could get a chase car up. We thought Riddle would help us out, but it wasn't working. So Middletown Township were working with their fire chief out there as well and their township officials, our borough officials. And um, we came up with some type of plan right now on paper. It's up to council to sign to it or agree to it, but it would be a chase car service between Brookhaven, Middletown and Edgemont Township. Three fifty-two car. The car would be stationed in Middletown's firehouse during the day. It would sleep in Rocky Run's firehouse at night. Before we had closure, paramedics left the Aston station, which apples for apples, same. It's really actually as close as Middletown, because it's a straight shot to us. So the fire company wanted to do its part, Middletown Township companies wanted to do their part. We had buy-in. The fire department, we bought a chase car. That's the big startup cause is the equipment. We bought a car, Middletown Township bought a car. We bought the life pack monitors for the paramedics. You gotta have two cars. If one breaks down, you gotta have another. You have to have two monitors. One monitor breaks down, you gotta have another monitor. Well, them things are a hundred grand, you know, fifty over fifty grand. So we brought two of that. They got the cars. The package that we kind of put together right now was um, it's in the process of being, Rocky Run's activating their license again. They used to have a paramedic service years ago, but they're gonna re-act their license. We're just to hold up right now is from the DEA, it's the ability for the paramedics to buy drugs that the paramedics have to carry. The license is. So that's kind of in lingo right now, in six to eight weeks, but that whole process is started. We already provided licensures for the two vehicles. Um, the contract would be signed, the borough would sign with Rocky Run Fire Company. It's Middletown EMS, it's got to support it, our whole township as well. Um, cost is here, we're coming right now. We're in the process of hi, we're in the process of hiring for full-time paramedics, some PRN paramedics. The deadline for the car is August the first, the one that we have now temporary. We put in for gap coverage with Aston Township Fire Company's paramedic. They hired their own. We, I contacted um, uh, one of their commissioners over there, Joe McGinn. And we set up that we're gonna pay them what we recover for the ALS portion in the bill. So that'll give us gap coverage till we can get our ambulance in, up and running for our paramedic car. So they still back us up now. That's how it works. If this ambulance is not available, you get that ambulance. That ambulance, you get another ambulance. It's the same as us. Brookhaven's tied up, you get Aston, you get Rocky Run. That's how it works. Um, all that stuff's been applied for, um, we're just, we're trying to get everything set up. A long-term cost to Brookhaven Borough would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, you know, that's money that I'm sure the borough, we, none of us want to need, but that's a lot better than three hundred and some thousand and five hundred and some thousand dollars.
Six hundred.
We have a little bit of, we have control over it. There are people we all know and work with every day. We're gonna re-put the money collected from the building. The ALS portion that Brookhaven collects and Middletown collects, whatever calls it goes on, will go back into it. So our initial startup, the hundred and fifty thousand, won't we, if we, we get started this year, the borough has no pay yet. We don't pay till next year. So that, by us providing that, the fire company buying that vehicle, gave us that gap protection and no cost to the borough till next year. So it's a little bit of a win-win there for us. Um, we'll see how that goes. I think it's, it's the best thing we could come up with so far, I think.
I think it's the best solution.
You saw what we're dealing with.
Yep, I think it's the best solution.
There's some shady deals going on out there. People are taking coverage for ambulances and by third-party people and they're telling them, no charge. Why just give you how much it don't operate at, then just with nothing, just this salary on it? When them third-party people come in and they do their reevaluation, that's where we have protection.
Yeah.
We, the residents, you guys have protection. Like somebody's not gonna kill everybody and say, oh, you owe us a half a million dollars next year. Or you owe us a billion dollars. We don't want that. We do not want that. That's why we did the initial buy-in. It's up to council to make the final decision which way, way they want to go, but that's where we are. Um, we think it's the best solution. Down the road, Aston is try, Aston's trying to partner with us, which is a great thing. They're, they got a little bit of bumps in their road, getting their stuff stabilized, but they may partner with that Chester Township. And then the two chase cars will run together. Riddle will still back us up on top of that. They just cannot come through with the money. They're just, it's crazy. Our idea is to build this car. We're not in the business to make money, right? We're in the business to sustain. We provide service to you guys. And we have to make a little bit to buy new vehicles and all that, because that's up to wear and carry. But that's about it. The chase car thing is, we just want to make that thing skate down the road at operating cost and just a little bit above, right? Because that's, that's out there providing service. That paramedic gets on our ambulance, it gets on Middletown's ambulance. And then he rides the call, or he leaves the call. He's like, we don't need his service. If we can transport just BLS with our truck, then he doesn't get one. So that's how all that works. But we're gonna invest the money. The capture money when we build for the ALS portion will go back into the program. So hopefully that'll be a fund to keep everything that we gotta pay every year down a little bit or at the scene. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
Yes, Chief.
May have the commissioner or our chief from Middletown come next meeting and he can give us an update.
Okay, nice.
That would be awesome.
So where we're at and moving a little further. But right, ALS up now, if, if they buy into this, it'll be a hundred and fifty thousand a year. And then um, no um, no pay till next year. So that's where we're at with that. Touch base on that Middletown Summit, that uh, condominium fire up there. I've definitely glasses, the writing is so small. So that call came in at uh, two thirty-eight in the morning. The police responded. Fire department was not dispatched till two forty-one. First arriving police officers were on scene as we were being dispatched. So they arrived on scene. There was a man trapped in his condominium. Police were able to get there and, and drag this guy out of his living room, out onto the front steps. As I pulled up, they just drug him out. I was there within three minutes of dispatch. The fire truck was there in like four and a half minutes after dispatch. Um, at two thirty in the morning, condominium's on fire, eighteen units. We need to account for every single person in that building, right? So we don't know. The fire's on the second floor, but the smoke's on the third floor and it's the whole building, second, third floor filling up with smoke. Fire company guys and our mutual aid companies did a great job. The police did a fabulous job getting that guy out, making a rescue and then they started banging on doors. Fire company got there. The opposite side of the building that nobody sees, there's nine other units. Well, they're still filling up with smoke, even though we don't save them from the side door. So our, our uh, fire company guys had water on the fire, kept the fire in the original unit. Heavy smoke above it, the units above, um, all the units were searched by our company and mutual aid companies. Nobody else was trapped in the building. It was, it all went off. It was a great stop by our fire guys. And the police did excellent, excellent work. I mean, they got that, they had that jump on it and them being on the street. Really, you know, saved that guy's life that day. Um, it was a, it was, hats off to the police officers and hats off to my guys on doing their job. That's what we do every day and that's what we're supposed to do every day and I couldn't be more proud of them and what they did. And that was a, that was a major event. That could have been bad. We had a fire years ago and you guys remember, we lost the whole building from it.
Yep.
So, and actually we saved three lives in that fire as well. So they get going, but uh, it was good, good attack. Two thirty in the morning, it's a scary thing, like you guys talked about, the fires. Two thirty in the morning is a scary thing and the fires are dispatched, right? It's, people are sleeping, you know, no smoke detectors working.
Yep.
Saved lives. So as far as the cause and origin of the fire, I'll leave that up to the fire marshal. He can give you that. That's his forte there. He likes that stuff. I don't want to steal his thunder. But um, yeah, that uh, anybody have any questions on anything or on the ALS portion?
Rob, I want to thank you and your brother for running the ALS, you know, working this out.
You guys did an amazing job.
Yeah, I mean, everybody was involved. This, this was not a hard, we were, this borough was getting almost forced. Am I right, Sheriff?
Yes, you are, sir.
They were forced to sign at this last meeting that we went to and we just looked at that job, we all, we all were like, no.
That's not happening.
Not to let us finish our homework here.
Yep.
And get the best deal we can for the borough, the taxpayers and, and have the best of interest. And when it's a third-party, it, people that you don't know, people always have the best thing in mind for us. You know, so we got everybody's uh, best interest thought about and, you know, I live in this town too and my family lives in this town. And we want the best people to come, right? And we're in Trump, we want the best people to come.
Yes, we do.
So that's where we're at. I mean, we didn't sign on that. Thank God we didn't. That was an awesome thing.
Mm-hmm.
But I tell you, I seen some things that I can't believe we're done doing that.
Yeah.
Shady operations going on, you know, but we held our ground and, you know, hopefully in the end, this, this is all going to come too. Things work pretty good.
I agree, sir.
So.
Chief, I just want to say that uh, some, some people know I was in an accident on June second in Brookhaven. And um, I had Aston's ambulance there and Brookhaven's and we also had a paramedic there.
And the fire company.
And the fire company, right. I just, yeah, cut me, yeah, okay. And uh, they, everybody did a great job. I wanted to publicly thank you for that, Chief.
Thank you for saving John and Laura.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, Chief Havich is uh, absent tonight, so I'm gonna read a portion of his report. Uh, Brookhaven Police Department for June of uh, twenty-twenty-five. Had fourteen adult arrests, zero juvenile arrests. Were thirty-three citations issued, parking violations numbered eighteen, and traffic warnings issued were fifty-three. Uh, some of the conditions or um, cases that they handled or investigating, there were twelve theft cases, two simple assaults. One disorderly conduct, six animal complaints, uh, noise complaints numbered five. Suspicious conditions numbered twenty-five. Arrestment calls numbered six. There were eighteen domestic or common disturbances. Uh, one mental health issue and the department assisted other departments at thirty-six different times. And the alarm calls listed at uh, twenty-one. And I'll say this, uh, uh, the Delaware County Domestic Abuse Project has awarded our department the Law Enforcement Partner of the Year for the year twenty-twenty-four. We've also received recognition on the Second Annual Inspirational Celebration, which was on June eleventh. Um, and the uh, department and Coburn Elementary Student Council partnered with the Domestic Abuse Project uh, to gather donations in support of the uh, project. And that concludes uh, Chief Havich's report. I'm sorry, John.
Can I get the whole thing?
No, it was it. Okay. And now we have the solicitor's report. Mr. Wills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A copy of the July seventh solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office. In the event any members of the public would care to peruse it. I do have one action item for council's consideration this evening. And that concerns a right-to-know law request appeal. Now, this appeal is not affiliated with Brookhaven Glen. Back on February twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-five, Ms. Carol Kelso had submitted three separate right-to-know law requests to the borough seeking certain employee medical insurance information. On April the seventh, the borough responded to Ms. Kelso's records request. Ms. Kelso is not satisfied with the borough's response and thereafter filed three appeals with the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records. On May the sixth, my office filed a legal response, including attestation signed by the borough secretary and a legal memorandum of law in support of the borough's position. A decision was rendered by the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records on June the twentieth, granting in part and denying in part Ms. Kelso's right-to-know law request appeal. Now, the decision of the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records would require the borough to provide certain confidential medical insurance information regarding borough employees, their spouses, their minor children. I believe the decision of the Pennsylvania Office of Open Records is contrary to the law. And therefore, I'm recommending that borough council authorize me to file an appeal with the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. And so if it is the pleasure of our council, a motion would be in order to authorize that appeal.
Somebody want to take the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions, concerns? Motion carries.
Number two concerns the Saint Joseph's Family Hope Center. I wish to advise that Saint Joseph's had vacated the former OLC convent building back on June the twenty-seventh. The locks to all the exterior doors have been changed and the building is now secure. And plans are being formulated for its public use by all borough residents. The borough has recently received a property tax bill assessing tactics, taxes due on the former OLC property convent building. In light of Saint Joseph's most recent departure of the building, I shall advise the Delaware County Board of Assessments that the building will now be exclusively used for public purposes. And request that the entire OLC parcel the borough purchased be classified as tax exempt.
Thank you.
Number three, an ordinance establishing tax credits for volunteer members of the fire department. Now, if you shall recall, Act one twenty-seven of twenty-sixteen authorizes boroughs to adopt regulations to grant tax credits on real estate taxes to residents who actively volunteer for the fire department and emergency medical services in the borough. Purpose of the legislation is to provide a financial incentive to members of a volunteer fire company or a nonprofit emergency medical service agency who go above and beyond the call of duty in responding to emergency calls within the borough. Those qualifying for the real estate tax credit must be a residential real estate property owner who occupies their property as their primary residence within the borough. I have drafted such an ordinance for council's consideration. The proposed ordinance will be subject to a, a, a motion to adopt this evening under Councilwoman Heller's fi, fire department report. Number four. Number four, proposed changes to the borough's civil service rules and regulations. The Civil Service Commission is recommending that borough council approve certain changes to its civil service rules and regulations relating to the hiring and promotional process for police officer candidates. The proposed changes would also authorize the commission to refuse to examine or certify candidates that have been determined ineligible to testify on behalf of a criminal prosecution by a district attorney within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I have reviewed these proposed recommendations and am in agreement with their adoption. And so, if it is the pleasure of borough council, such changes may be approved through a motion, again, to be offered by Vice President Pappas in his Police Committee report. Number five, a resolution adopting written policies and procedures for review of all elevation certificates and other required floodplain-related construction certificates. Now, recently, the borough's Emergency Management Coordinator, Mr. Steve Schultz, has requested that the borough consider adopting written policies and procedures for construction-related activities that may occur in the borough's floodplain hazard area. Now, such policies and procedures are required in order for the borough to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, which we do, and of course, as well as to verify compliance with the borough's floodplain management ordinance. And so, accordingly, I have dra, I have drafted a very comprehensive, five-page resolution for borough council's consideration under Councilwoman Heller's Emergency Management Committee report approving and adopting written policies and procedures governing the borough's issuance of all elevation certificates and other required floodplain-related construction certificates, again, occurring in the borough's floodplain hazard area. And with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Moving along, uh, the engineer's report, Mr. Catania.
Thanks, Mr. Pappas. Copying my report is on file. Couple of things I do want to mention is, first, we had a storm drain on Grandview Drive near Edgemont Avenue that's partially collapsed. Going to ask for a motion to authorize repair of that storm drain.
Who's going to take the motion? So moved. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any concerns? Motion carries.
Uh, going to the Borough Municipal Complex Cooling Tower replacement, the Scanon Associates has ordered the, uh, equipment spec that will arrive in the next, say, eight weeks or so, so the, the, um, tower, tower will be replaced during the turnover from summer cooling to winter heating. And then, we know where the, the traffic accident that occurred at Edgemont and Trimble Boulevard, uh, we're going to, we have already contacted Penn to do a safety review. There's been a number of accidents there over the last five years that, uh, require, makes sense for them to do a safety review at the intersection. And I think that's all I have.
I have, I have some questions for Mr. Catania. Mr. Catania, um, you realize we do have the convent on Upland Road, and John Wilworth and I and some others checked the property, and we needed to know if we can get specs for a bid that we can have someone who receives the bid actually do the work from January through April of next year, so we can fix the building the way it needs to be. John and I were there, we went through it, um, with the highway foreman, and we realized there's things that have to be done in the building, not just painting and things like that. But we wanted to get a bid, and the reason we wanted to get a bid done this year, so that the work can be done the first quarter of next year, so that we can actually put the money that we need for the bid into the budget that I'm doing right now for 2026. And I don't want us to be short next year if we don't have the money, like if we, if the, we have a bid that comes in in October, and we know that they're going to start in January, well, then we know how much the bid is, and I can put that in this, the budget for next year. I just want to make sure we're not short in our budget for next year, and we're not, because we are going to have things like the 150,000 Mr. Montella just talked about. So I have to put these larger items in there. And I'm, I'm hoping, John would be able to help whoever in your office. He can, he can tell you, we went through it, we know what we want to fix besides painting and things like that. There's some structural things, I'm moving some kitchen items out because we need a freezer and some other things. So I can, is there some way we can, um, make a motion tonight so that he could start preparing it?
Has the committee met? Did the OLC committee meet to discuss these? Yes, it does matter, because there's a committee that was developed with the...
We're trying to repair the building so we can use it.
I, I understand that, but there was a committee that was for the public to make those decisions as to how they want that to be planned. And if I understand correctly...
Is it cleanup, or is it actual renovations?
Because it sounds like renovations.
I'm doing renovations because the place needs to be renovated, so we can use it for the public.
What, what, I'll suggest that, Councilwoman, because obviously, that would entail then renovations, clearly, a significant expenditure of taxpayer dollars, that again, that go on the agenda perhaps as early as next month at the August monthly meeting. Hopefully, within the next 30 days or so, uh, the Recreation Department, any other committee that may be...
Well, it's the OLC committee.
Uh, the OLC, I'm sorry. The OLC committee may be, may meet and have some ideas as to how we're going to repurpose that particular building, and this way, it'll give, uh, Mr. Catania, uh, at least some preliminary knowledge on what type of bid specs he would be looking to submit. So, clearly, because this does involve an expenditure, obviously, it's not on the agenda this evening, so clearly, we would defer this at least until, right, and defer this at least for one month until the August meeting. If we don't have our ducks in order by August, then certainly, we could defer it till September. But, uh, I agree, this is something the OLC committee should begin to look into in the upcoming...
He has to go after bids.
I'm on the OLC committee, Mrs. Swicki, and, uh, yeah, I haven't had the opportunity to tour the convent building.
Well, I'm sure John can make arrangements for you.
So, I would like to do that, and maybe Terry involved, as he's on the committee, and let us...
Dan's on the committee?
The only way you have to do...
There's 15 people in that committee that need to have their recommendations in as well. It's for the public.
So maybe we plan another meeting this month, and we can get in there and take a look ourselves. Like, yeah, I'm sure there is work that needs to be done, I'm not denying that.
To make it habitable so people can actually work in there.
It is ours.
So we're going to note that we need, something has to be looked at.
Yep. Okay. The OLC committee toured the building, I haven't had an opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Interviewed you. Thank you. So we'll work on that.
All right. Concluded?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to read, uh, Mr. Heller's report here. He has a couple of action items here. One is a motion to approve the June 2nd, 2025 council meeting minutes.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the security camera system for a lady at Charity School in the amount of $7,115.85.
Say that pricing in.
$7,000, $7,115.85.
That's what was that email was about, correct?
That is for the school, we still have the comment.
That's to upgrade the camera system, so we're protecting our, our interests. That's correct.
Yes, it's for, it's for the full camera system.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a second one. Any concerns?
No.
Motion carries. There's a second motion to approve the security camera system for the OLC convent now in the price of $8,583.
So moved.
Second motion.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any concerns? Motion approved. And that concludes, uh, Mr. Heller's report. Mrs. Swicki, Miss Swicki.
Okay. I do have, um, a couple of things. The first is the bill list for July. So I am going to be making a motion to approve the bill list. General fund is $108,350.19. Road fund is $1,999. Sewer fund is $49,334.75. Trash fund is $3,523.77 for a total payment for July for $163,207.71. So I'm making that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Now, the other motion I have to make is that we do have annual trash rebates for seniors who qualified, and they, um, I'm making that motion so, so that the treasurer can fill out those, um, checks for, um, this month for them.
A second.
The second's in?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
I just want to thank, is Steve still here? Because I love the way that he does the billing. You can actually read it.
I know.
I appreciate it.
I know.
Very much.
Because he does a very nice job.
Yes, he does.
I did tell him.
Thank you, Steve.
Just hold me up. You're off.
Just one quick update. The next Sustainability Committee meeting will be tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. And that's it.
Okay, Mrs. Heller.
Yep. I'm going to, uh, just do the motions really quickly, um, before I go into my report. Jay, do I need to read the 75 pages of each one, or is it good just to do the motion?
Just the motions we have here.
Motion, no, no, nothing? Okay, great. So the first motion, as Jay spoke about earlier, is a motion to adopt an ordinance enacting a property tax credit program for volunteer members of the Brookhaven Borough Volunteer Fire Company.
I'll motion.
Second?
I'll take the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I want to thank the Fire Board. I know this is something that they've been working very diligently for, and I'm so glad that we're able to do this for the Fire Department. They worked very, very hard, volunteering their time and actually, you know, jeopardizing their lives every day. So I'm very glad that we were able to do that for them.
Motion carries.
Yep. The second motion is to adopt a resolution approving written policies and procedures for review of all elevation certificates and all other required floodplain-related construction certificates in the borough.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Questions, concerns? Motion carries.
So, onto my report. Let me get this for you. Have to bear with me for one moment, so I can read it. Um, there was no parade committee, um, we did not meet in June, there will not be a meeting this July, so our next parade committee is going to be on Wednesday, August 13th, at 7:30 PM. Technology and Communications met on Tuesday, 6:24. Um, we provided updates to the newsletter, so if you're not getting them, please go on our website and, um, get onto your Brookhaven alerts. Right now, we currently have 1,200 residents that are signed up. Um, our next scheduled meeting for Technology is on the 10th of July, um, and we're going to be updating our website. Um, I wanted to give a special thanks. You heard Chief Montella talk about the fire. Um, it's very scary stuff, especially in the wee hours of the night. Um, I don't think Chief Montella gave his department enough credit, because they did an amazing job on saving lives, as well as Acting Sergeant Martin, as well as Officer Viola, who is one of our newly hired officers. So we cannot thank you enough, um, for all that you do for our community every, every day. Um, the concert in the park that was scheduled for June 14th, the Basic Cable Performers, had to be rescheduled due to the weather, so that one has been rescheduled for Saturday, August 23rd at Eaton Park at 7:00. Uh, the concert for July is going to be July 19th, um, at Eaton, and the performers are going to be a touch of the blues. I want to, um, thank a local resident with a cause. On Saturday, June 21st, the Drive for Hope Rally, which was organized by Pat and Alicia McGuire, um, from the Elite Speed Tour, um, provided a fundraiser for the Hope for Halle, and they chose to utilize the, the sanctuary as their meetup place, and the Police Department assisted on a safe, uh, travel through Brookhaven. Um, the Pat and Alicia are, um, the founder and the charity directors that live in our borough, and they're amazing individuals. They created this Elite Speed Tour, which is an organization that goes out and looks for nonprofit organizations to kind of help them with their cause. So what better cause than for mental health awareness and suicide awareness? So I want to thank Pat and Alicia for working with the Hope for Halle Foundation and you, and picking Brookhaven as the, the destination place. Um, George did mention that the B, the PD did host a, a presentation by the FBI on Friday. Um, I think you mentioned about this. On Friday, the 27th of July at the borough, it was the FBI did a presentation on romance phone scams for our senior residents, as well as other scams. Um, I want to thank Detective Wetton for actually kind of, um, taking responsibility for that and coordinating it, along with Harry, for assisting with the setup. Um, but it was a very well-informed, um, presentation, from what I'm being told. Um, on June 19th, I want to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Works, um, Stephen Schultz, um, Harry, as well as Mr. Wilworth, um, and Mr. Catania for, um, the storm that we had, wasn't a storm of the century, but it was still a storm, um, and we had a lot of, uh, power outages, a lot of trees down, um, so I want to thank everyone for their coordinated effort to get, uh, the borough back into business for normal operations. We also want to put out there as a reminder, as the Fire Marshal is staring me down, as generators must be 20 feet away from any structure. I'm sure he'll be mentioning it in his report as well. Brookhaven softball and bass, and baseball have ended their seasons, they're just doing tournaments as of right now. I want to thank the old board, um, and welcome the new board. We look forward to working with the new board, and we can't thank the old board for their years of service for both of those organizations. We also had Family Day, and, uh, the Rec Board met on June 26th. It was a wonderful Family Day meeting. We have our shirts all picked out, we're all ready for the day, can't wait for what a wonderful time that's going to be. Um, our next meeting for both Family Day and for the Rec Board is on the 31st of, of July. Family Day's at 6:00, and, uh, Rec Board's at 7:00, and we're always, always, always looking for volunteers. Uh, the Show for Hope Car Show is scheduled for Sunday, July 20th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Coburn Parking Lot. The rain date is going to be Sunday, June, I'm sorry, July 27th. I also want to mention that we had Artful Aging on the 29th. We had about 25 younger ladies, uh, participating in the activities, and we have our next one on July 27th from 1:00 to 3:00. So I look forward to that. I want to thank, um, Mr. Catania, as well as our Rec Board, um, and John Wilworth for, we were awarded the Somerville Park, um, grant, which is $156,875, no match. So I want to thank Tom and the Rec Board for making the recommendations for the Somerville Park, um, and we are grateful that we were actually chosen for that, um, that grant. Um, I want to congratulate Stephen Schultz on his FEMA professional certification. I know you worked very hard for two years on that, so congratulations on your certi, certification. Um, just an upcoming to put in all of our calendars, on Tuesday, August 5th, um, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM is the National Night Out. It'll be held here at the borough. It'll be our second one here at the building, third one all together, and it's a great night to come out and meet our Fire Department and our Police Department, so we look forward to having people come out and, and visit. I want to have a belated, uh, birthday for Officer Zebly in June, as well as Miss Boyle, but I want to wish, in the month of July, a happy birthday to Bill Gavin, who is our zoning officer, Officer Barth, Officer Kelso, Mr. Harry over there, who's coming up on his birthday, and also Mr. Wills. Um, so, um, I also just want to put out to, you know, not to end on a sad note, but I want us to keep in mind the families of the Idaho firefighters that lost their lives on that ambush on June 29th. June twenty-ninth. So we want to make sure that we keep them and their families in our hearts, as well as all of the folks that are missing from the horrible Texas flooding. There are still a lot of people that are missing, especially those kids from that camp. So just, you know, let's keep them in our hearts and in our prayers. With that, just general progress, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. My, my report consists of three action items. The first is a motion to adopt and approve certain changes to the Brookhaven Borough Civil Service Rules and Regulations as recommended by the commission. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. My second action, motion to authorize the Civil Service Commission to create eligibility list for the position of full-time police officer in the Brookhaven Borough Police Department.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Anybody second?
I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the third, a motion to authorize the Civil Service Commission to create an eligibility promotional list for the position of sergeant within the borough Brookhaven Police Department.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes my report. Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. The ordinance committee did not meet in June, nor will it meet in July. Members are using that time to review the language of older ordinances, to see if there's any updating that might need to occur. Our next scheduled meeting is for Thursday, August twenty-first, at six-thirty PM. Anybody interested in attending is more than welcome to. I do want to touch on the OLC committee did meet on Wednesday, July second, so this past Wednesday. I do know that members of the committee did do a walkthrough of the convent. I was not part of that walkthrough. I know that Council President, Mr. Heller, was there, as well as some of the, I know, Tom, you were there. John, did you go on that? Okay, so several people, Lynn, yep, several of the, John, did you make it as well?
No.
Okay. I know several members of the committee were able to take a tour of the, of the facility. So, you know, I don't want to speak on their behalf, obviously, but I think we all know that there's going to be some improvements that are going to be necessary for that, that building, because there are a lot of things that definitely need updating. So hopefully, we can get that resolved very soon.
Just something that we can start with. We're not looking at full-blown. We just want to get it operational, and then in another year or two, whatever else we have to go with.
Yes, I think.
We're trying to put enough money in next year's budget to do that and to do with some other.
And I, I think that would be in keeping with what a lot of members of the committee have already expressed, so I don't see that as being a problem. Hopefully, we'll get that resolved next month. And that's the end of my report.
I do have, I'm sorry, I do have one thing. At the rec board meeting, I think it was discussed, if you can put Dan on your radar for the ordinance, we've been getting a lot of requests for park rental or usage. So I don't know if there's something where you can put out to the committee about looking and bringing up some of the park ordinances that we can maybe have a healthy conversation with the rec board.
Yeah, we, we worked on that last year, I believe it was. John raised some issues, Mr. Wilward did, and the ordinance committee did meet, and we discussed it. And we, we felt that there could be a lot of issues, not the least of which could be liability issues for renting out the parks. If that's a conversation that members of council want to have an executive session, I can always bring that back to, obviously, the members of the committee, but that was something that was, you know, one of the, one of the many concerns about renting out.
So it wasn't necessarily rental, renting, it was the use of the fields, like having like a use, when we have to utilize Coburn, we have to fill out the use of the facility paperwork, documentation, stuff to that degree. So it was something more of when people want to utilize, not for rentals or anything like that, but having those kinds of documentations in an ordinance of some sort. Am I explaining that right, Tom?
It has to do with having someone, right now, have the adult baseball that uses their park.
Correct.
But they won't, they, we had no agreement with that, you know, on paper. It's all verbal.
Well, we have their insurance.
Well, we have their insurance.
We have.
Yeah, well, they have their insurance, but this was something that was done in previous years. So it's something that we would like just to have documented, and if there's our ordinances out there that we can go back to and look at. Jay's always very good at giving us language to utilize. Obviously, our fields are for our residents for first use as well, but we partner with Miltown Library for the books on blankets and stuff like that. So if more from like a community-related, if other people from the community want to utilize them, and what that would look like.
Okay.
Yeah, the one, the one, the one person who inquired about it, they wanted to bring multiple barbecue.
Yeah, yeah. That was definitely.
They wanted to play loud music.
A no from, you know.
Yeah, there was a request to be able to have DJ there, or even loud music, you know, they wanted to have a party in the park, is basically what it comes down to.
Yeah, I think it's just very loose. I know we adopted new things last year with the park, with the lights, making the, you know, the after dark to ten o'clock versus the nine o'clock. So it's just something, I think, because we've been getting a lot of demands for it, is just to have something that we can go back to, so.
Sure.
A lot of what we get from the requests is like, I want to have my five-year-old's little party in the park, and what do you, I don't know what to say.
Yeah, yeah. Moon bounces, all that.
At midnight, John?
No, no.
Party?
No, not midnight.
Well, I only let him do it if I can get a bite in.
Yes, that's right.
You're tough, John.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mrs. DePlicky.
My turn. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First, I just want to say I hope everyone had a happy and safe Fourth of July weekend, this past weekend. We were booming into the night, but I think I didn't hear any horror stories and anything happening. So I hope everybody had a good day, or good weekend, really. Quickly on the Business Revitalization Committee, dates for meetings are next, next Monday, the fourteenth, and also in August showing dates that we will be meeting. I'm just to create less confusion, we will not be meeting through the summer, so Councilwoman Fovio and I will talk, touch base on it and try to get this up and running in the fall, so. But if you see it in the calendar for July and August, we will not be meeting. Trash and recycling, have good news. We received a recycling grant on June seventeenth in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and four dollars. This money is basically a refund award that was applied during the COVID pandemic, and, you know, for the year two thousand and twenty-two, this came in. Applications and paperwork were already filed to apply for the same type of grant in twenty, for two thousand and twenty-three. So it's a nice amount of money. It does vary year by year, the amount we get, but it's always, twenty-three thousand's a good chunk of money to, so hopefully, we get some good awards for two thousand and twenty-three as well. I want to thank John Wilward for staying on top of this reward and properly filing all the necessary paperwork and applications to receive this money. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, John.
Okay, moving on to Public Works. Sorry. The, the summer phase of the Branch and Limb Collection for the summer session has started, and it's actually started today. It's also available for pickup on Wednesday and Friday this week. Next week, pickup days are Tuesday and Thursday. So if you have any limb debris you want to get rid of, or call the, you know, borough secretaries here and make a time to get on one of those days for your pickup.
On Coburn? Coburn Boulevard? That tree was cut down by the electric company, and it's sitting on the sidewalk. And that would be a great idea for you to.
Yeah, I'll talk to them tomorrow.
If you wouldn't mind, because it's, somebody's going to fall over it.
Yeah, I think Dave's.
That, that big tree fell over the wire, and then they finally fixed, they cut it up, and they just left it on the street.
I'll touch base with Bud and see if they can take care of that.
And we just, it's a safety thing at this point.
Yeah, I saw it, I've seen it.
Okay, I just wanted to remind people, because it's, I don't want anybody getting hurt. People walking their dogs, somebody could.
It's right outside the sanctuary, right?
Yeah, it's private property. It's not the borough property.
I know, but we got to protect people from the owner on the corner.
It's his tree.
It's his tree.
But again, she's right. I mean, it's on the sidewalk, so it is a safety.
Yeah, maybe I can get the person's name and tell them to get on the list to get it picked up.
You just have to throw it on the truck.
If our guys are there, they can just move.
I'll bring it to their attention.
I, I appreciate that, Dave, thank you.
They'd highlight that, so they'll bring it up. Okay. So like I said, if you have any limb debris, call the borough and get on one of those dates to have it removed from your property. The last thing I have, I have a motion. It is the new summer season for the seasonal employees at Public Works. Every twenty, there's one hundred and twenty-day cycles, and the one, the new one hundred and twenty-day cycle starts today. So my motion is to rehire seasonal employees Matt Barrowcloth, Matt Perrinello, Panarello, Rich Lynch, Aiden Robbins, Ryan Getz, and Matt Hostler for the additional summer one hundred and twenty days at the current rate of twenty-two dollars an hour effective today, July seventh, twenty twenty-five. And I get a motion.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any questions? Motion carries.
Real quick on that, our public work supervisor, Dave Evans, really likes these guys, says they're doing wonderful work, and he's, you know, he really needs their help, especially this time of year, so.
Oh, good. They're working out.
They're working out very well. Well, we will lose a couple of them for college.
Okay.
You know, probably late August, September.
We'll keep on the list for next year, the following year.
That's what Dave does.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, that concludes my report. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. DePlicky. That leaves us with the inspectors, Mr. Fire Marshal, Mr. Lesley, there he is.
Save the best for last. Best for last.
Last, but not least.
Yes.
Charles Leslie. The gracious with his presence.
Somebody left their glasses up here. Good evening, council residents. Okay. Mine are back. There's two pairs of tracks.
Oh.
A couple of things here that there we spoke on the OLC convent. All new keys are over there, the locks are all changed, they're in the Knox box and so forth. Pico's going to be doing routine vegetation, cutting throughout the borough, you saw that?
Yes.
Pico's also installing new gas main over on Tremble Boulevard across Bridgewater. The National Night Out Fire Prevention Material was ordered and in.
Good for the Family Day?
No, for the National.
That is National Night Out only stuff. It came in a little cheaper, but the price of that stuff is getting really astronomical for the fire prevention stuff. The paper products are really going up.
Really?
So. This gentleman brought up about Lowe's. Lowe's is kind of like a full-time job for the inspectors. It's such a huge building and huge fire load over that place. I didn't know anything about the electrical panel. I will be on the phone with Todd in the morning.
I already called DJ, so DJ's aware.
Okay, I will be on the phone with Todd in the morning, the manager, okay? I have a personal relationship with this guy, only because we've had some problems up at Lowe's just recently. The fire load in there is so great. We had, we did not have keys for the fire alarm panels. Somebody removed them. They didn't replace them. I was getting kind of stonewalled, so I reached out to the corporate people. The keys should be here this week. We will have keys in our Knox box now, and we will have keys put back in the panel. And nobody, according to the corporate people, are allowed to reset that alarm until the fire company gets there. Some people think they know what they're doing. They just recently had to bring an electric company in because one guy thinks he knows what he's doing, and he fouled the entire system up. Okay, we were up there for two hours and fifteen minutes. The fire company cannot be out that long on a fire alarm at Lowe's. Yep. And if there's any issues, they want me to reach back out to the corporate people. So. Thirty-four, thirty-two Edgemine Avenue, there's another wireless phone store going in there. The shopping centers that Officer Barth and I are working on, they're coming around. They did put new signs at three fifty-two Plaza. Over here, Aldi, obvious Plaza down there is a little, little slower. The wheels of justice turn slow here in the borough sometimes, there, Mr. Wills, as you know, but we are working on that diligently. Been in contact with those people also. Just want to throw this out there. Lithium batteries. I read about it all the time, at least twice a week. Charge them outside your longmowers, don't charge them in your garages. Away from a structure, whether it's a wheelchair, a scooter, don't block any exits and charge them outside. There's something, every two days on the NFB website that I follow about lithium batteries, they are so dangerous. And I'm going from a toothbrush to a city bus, basically.
Oh, my God.
Okay? They're very dangerous. Harbin Way, we thought we had that under control. Absolutely, we don't. I did put keys to all the mechanical rooms just recently. Got keys finally from Mr. Patrick over here. All the mechanical rooms now have keys, they're in our Knox box. All my stuff is up to par. I don't know what some people are saying, but I wrote many reports, I turned them in here to the borough, to Mr. Catania. We walked that property numerous times. The sprinklers will go off if there's a fire. Okay, somebody brought up their building. It's two separate buildings, they're fully sprinkled. Hilltop is not sprinkled, okay? So those sprinklers are going to activate.
And they're working.
They're working. They are just recently inspected.
There are this week both the alarms and the sprinklers.
Every, every year, they get re-inspected, but they're going to go off. Those heads are going to trip if the fire gets filled or the heat sensors, they're going to trip in those mechanical rooms. Okay, one last thing here, the Hilltop Fire. People, we say it every month, I say it, the chief says it, the police chief says it, call nine-one-one soon as you smell smoke in your building, okay? It was a delayed nine-one-one call. That guy is very lucky to be alive. Interviewed everybody at least three times that were involved right there in that little area, okay? Call nine-one-one. Was unattended cooking. The guy put something on the stove and went and sat down. The fire started on the stove. The smoke was in the third-floor apartment. The guy was upstairs looking for the smoke, came down, never called nine-one-one, never brought a cell phone with him. Tried to get in the second-floor apartment, he couldn't get in. Goes down and wakes the lady up on the first floor, wakes her up out of bed at two-thirty in the morning. She goes up because she has the door code. How many minutes passed?
Four, five.
What?
Four, five.
He's on the third floor.
Yeah.
He's on the third floor, trying to figure out where the smoke's coming. Coming up behind his refrigerator, he said, and his stove.
And he didn't come.
Didn't call, comes down, fumbles with the door. Can't get in because he forgot the code, and he couldn't see because it was dark, and he didn't bring his. Twenty minutes.
The whole building.
Didn't bring his cell phone. Waits the lady up on the first floor, gets her out of bed. Thirty minutes. Comes back up, tries to open the door, they get the door, they're pushed back by the heat, the smoke and the flames. This guy's laying on the, on the floor crying for help. They couldn't get him out. The police ended up dragging him out. So I went up there because I'm. Is there a timer, or you just? I'm, I'm effed up, you know, so I go up there and I try to do all this, and I just delayed. I'm going for like twenty-one to twenty-three minutes before the first phone call was made in a nine-one-one center. Nobody had their cell phones, they both had to go separate directions to go get their cell phones. The guy in the middle unit, third floor, he's woken up by a smoke detector because his apartment was full of smoke, he was one of the first phone calls. People, please call 911. Just a kitchen fire, a little kitchen fire, a stove in your cabinets. You're out of your place for a minimum of six to seven months. Two rooms or more, it's over a year, you're going to be out of your place. You're going to be out of your house for over a year with two or more rooms involved.
Oh, God.
Out of your house. Then you got to get everything new, clothing, drapes, paint, everything, couches, beds, everything. Please call 911 if you smell smoke in your dwelling, your structure. Don't hesitate. Don't be embarrassed. I hear that all obviously embarrassed to call. What are you embarrassed for? Your house is on fire. People, please call 911. I say it every month. It's coming. I hope the guy didn't ever know, but I hope we don't have to call out there to ferry acres into the basement. You know what I'm talking about, okay? I hope we don't have to do that here. I don't want to see fire anywhere in the Borough. Nobody's house on fire, nobody trapped ever. We're very lucky, very lucky in this Borough. Cambridge Road a couple of years ago, the other people in Hilltop, Summit just recently. I don't know what to say. I'm begging you to call 911.
What's the formula, like every, the fire increases in size or?
Every nine seconds, it doubles in size.
Say the whole formula.
Yeah, so it's what, 9, 18, 27, so.
Right.
It's a fire.
Every nine seconds.
Every nine seconds.
The fire.
23 minutes. Because I went back there two days later, because I always go back and interview two or three times at a people and then you get more information out of them. When they're more relaxed, you know, you sit them down, relax. I went, I talked to everybody in all 18 units, got all their information, okay? So then I went and did it myself. So I go up there, because nobody's there, I stand up on the third-floor balcony a couple of minutes, I'm just puttering around. Then I go down, I try to open the door, can't get in the door. Then I go down, knock, pretend I'm knocking on a lady's door, she's two or three minutes. She's got to get her robe and slippers on. She comes out, what's going on? Oh, the apartment's on fire upstairs, yelling for help. They're up there fumbling, nobody has a cell phone, nobody called 911. He's got to run back to the third floor, he said, and she's got to run to the first floor to get her cell phone to make the call. I hope we never have to call out the fair acres into that.
Robbie needs his glasses.
Who else, somebody else got glasses here? Are you yours, Jay?
No. Appreciate your passion.
Robbie.
Thank you.
Robbie wants his.
Thank you, Charles.
Is that yours or?
These are three, these are two and a half.
Isn't there something else?
That's the end of my report, Vice President.
Thank you.
Very good, as usual.
That opens up the second public discussion.
Of course I do.
She forgot something.
She forgot something.
I'm sorry.
It wasn't nice to say.
On the 19th, Artful Aging on 27th, Family Day meetings and rec board meeting on 31st.
Too many meetings.
Basic Cable on 23rd. I would, I was hoping we had a room full of seniors here. That they would have stayed to find out about the Artful Aging program.
I can mention Artful Aging. I talked about Artful.
Before you leave, I get your information, you know how to get information.
Artful Aging, I did talk about Artful Aging.
Is that why we want to get you programs or specifically for seniors? Okay, thank you. The biggest thing that we need to bring up in a sound facility to talk about it now is Family Day is September 27th. Why am I talking about Family Day in July? Well, tickets for Family Day start going out on August 25th. So everybody has about seven weeks to figure out if they're going to be here on September the 27th to get their Family Day tickets. Please, please, please get them. They're free. Doesn't cost you anything, food, just Christmas, and it's a great, another big thing for the seniors over there to find out what's going on in Brookhaven.
Pretty free.
Okay, that's pretty much it.
I did mention the Artful Aging.
You did, I thought we had the seniors to do that.
Okay, okay.
Anyone else for public discussion? He's walking at the door. All right, I'm going to take the motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
Coming back from round two.
Thought he was excellent.
Round two. Well, now he's a personal, now he's a resident.
Charles Leslie, 703 Cambridge Road. I will. Alls I'm asking, please, people, curb your hounds if you're walking in my neighborhood. I don't have the nicest property in B-Town, but I do take pride in my property. Please, pick up after your hounds. Because I readjusted my cameras. I got four cameras on my house, now they're all facing, I will catch you. And I don't want to see anything on your bow window or front door like a new decorative piece. Because I will track you down, please, curb your dogs. Thank you.
All right, I take a motion to adjourn. We have the second one?
Yes, we have a second.
Any opposed? Motion carries.